We'll call the July fifteenth, twenty twenty-five Williams County Board of County Commissioners meeting to order. Roll call, please.
Barry?
Here.
Steve?
Here.
Bo?
Here.
Chris?
Here.
With a quorum, we'll proceed. If everybody please stand for the pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Okay, that brings us to the consent agenda. What are the wishes?
Mr. Chairman, I'd move to approve the consent agenda.
Is there a second?
Second.
Moved in second. Any discussion? Discussion. Roll call, please.
Barry?
Yes.
Steve?
Yes.
Cory?
Yes.
Bo?
Yes.
Chris?
Yes.
Motion carried. Item D, public comment. You're not on the agenda somewhere. This is the place. If you have any comments, I don't think I see anyone. Departments. Beth, looks like you're up with liquor license.
I have two lipper, lipper, uh, liquor licenses today for the fast mile, Fast Lane twenty-nine. And they've been inspected and everything's a go with them as much as we can. And the other one, the four mile is selling, and the new owner is Darcy Dawson. And she takes over effective August one. So I just need permission to approve those liquor licenses.
So all the rules were followed and everything is up to date?
Yep, everything's good. Taxes paid. Everything's fine.
Okay, any questions for Beth on the liquor license? Or the wishes?
Just a quick question. Is the Fast Lane under new ownership?
No.
Oh, okay.
We did have our, um, fire inspector go out and inspect it, and I think you got a copy of that in your reports. So everything's as good as it can be right now.
Make a motion to approve?
Is there a second?
All second.
Moved in second. Any discussion? Discussion. Roll call, please, Beth.
Steve?
Yes.
Cory?
Yes.
Bo?
Yes.
Chris?
Yes.
Barry?
Yes.
Motion carried. Thank you. Uh, Dennis?
So we put a bid package together for a mechanic's truck, and as y'all know, opting for vehicles and everything, you can get all different types. So I picked out a few things that were important and so we'd have it out so everybody would have a chance. So as you see from the, uh, bid package, um, some of them didn't have welders and some did, so we went out and got a price on a welder so we could keep everybody on the same page. First of all, Normont, one hundred and eighty-six thousand forty-five dollars without welder. Ten thousand for the welder. Red Rock, one hundred and eighty-six thousand, one hundred and ninety-eight dollars without a welder. Wesley Motors, one hundred and seventy-two thousand, three hundred and eighty-two dollars without a welder. Then we moved to these, they gave us options so we could look at all different body shapes. The four doors, Wesley Motors without a welder, one hundred and seventy-seven thousand, nine twenty-five. So we'd have to add ten thousand to that as the welder is ten thousand dollars. Red Rock, one hundred and ninety-one thousand, five hundred and thirty dollars, and it is a complete four-door, just like Wesley Motors. One hundred and ninety-one thousand, five hundred and thirty, and it does have the welder and it's complete and the naphthaite and it's, yeah, just like Wesley's also.
And this was budgeted for?
Yes.
Okay, anybody got any questions for Dennis?
I would, I'm assuming that, you know, the complete package, then you don't have to put it together, and I mean, it, it, it would be the way to go myself.
Correct, and it's local. And, and Wesley's is in Minot, so our service worker recalls or warranty would be done and there are. Standing in line here.
I would make a motion to approve the, uh, purchase from Red Rock for one ninety-one, five thirty.
Well, seconded.
Moved in second. Any discussion? Discussion? Hearing none. Roll call, please.
Cory?
Yes.
Bo?
Yes.
Chris?
Yes.
Barry?
Yes.
Steve?
Yes.
Motion carried.
Okay, little update if you'd like on the projects. Uh, County Route eleven is back open again. The box covert is in. Um, they'll, weather permitting, they should probably have ninety percent of the, of the dirt work completed this week. As of right now, again, weather permitting and schedules go great, they should be starting to pave on the twentieth of August. At County eleven up by Alamo, and then the two miles of twelve. So it's coming along pretty good. Uh, that one, uh, eleven A and forty-two is coming along good. We have the road, or they have the road closed from County nine over to eleven because they have those two real deep culverts to put in. They anticipate weather permitting to be open by the end of the week, hopefully. Uh, they're hauling gravel and it's come along real nice. And of course, seventeen A, like I reported last time, is completed. There's a handful of signs to put up yet, and it really turned out nice. If you get a chance, go down there. Jeremy? It's, I, yeah, it even turned out better than I thought. Bruh, hurry up, we gotta go. It's nice. Turned out real nice. Even got a couple of public positive comments. Other than that, uh, Chip Seal has, uh, been chipped and fogged, and we had some, uh, we call it bleeding at the oil peaks through, so we had to run out with sand trucks and sand here and there when you guys had the ninety, or we had the ninety, ninety-five degree days. It does happen, uh, more or less right on five, right close to you. But, uh, it settled in and hopefully, hopefully it's set up. There's a few stop bars yet to put on. Um, striping, boys. That's where we're at so far. New report in two weeks. Hope we start making her black quick. Yep, yep, it's coming. Okay, thank you.
You're not wrong. Thanks, Dennis. Appreciate it. Uh, looks like Sheriff, you're up.
Morning Commissioners. I just want to say thanks to Cameron for switching with me. Appreciate it. I don't care what Lindsay says about you. I think you're great. All right, so just trying to think of where to start with all of this. Um, gonna go over probably just the real quick command structure, what the sheriff's office is. I'm not sure everybody quite understands or knows how we're set up. So myself, sheriff is the top, and then chief deputy is right under me. So if I'm gone and decisions need to be made, it's the chief deputy that makes those decisions in my absence. Uh, staying within the main office side is going to be the patrol lieutenant, and he's going to be in charge of our entire patrol division, which is four sergeants, four corporals, and then our line staff on the patrol side. Also, there is investigations lieutenant, and then we have four investigators under that division as well. We also have what is one of the newer pieces of the sheriff's office, which is going to be our special operations division. And that is Sergeant Jamie Hushka, which I'm sure some of you know from his, either his time with Highway Patrol or now his years with us. He's been doing a really good job in that position. Jamie essentially is in charge of our weight enforcement things, so his experience with the Highway Patrol previously, I think melds well with that, uh, so he knows what those guys are talking about much better than I do usually. Um, they are good at what they do, and they're pretty driven individuals that are in those roles right now, so that's going very well. He's also in charge of our newest program, which is the canine division. I say division, it's one person, one dog. But that has been a very positive experience. I haven't always been really pro canine within my time here. I've seen some odd things that have happened with them that are strange. But this particular canine that we received, so it is a German Shepherd, it is not a bite dog or an aggressive dog in any way. Uh, we do a number of training tracks with this dog, and frankly, when he finds the person, they get licked to death more than anything. So we have no concern about bringing this dog into a school, you know, to either do sniffs for the school or just to come in as a PR piece and let the kids see the dog and hang out with the dog. Dog is canine certified, or excuse me, narcotics certified as well. That is going very, very well. The dog is very good as far as the indications he's making. They're not a bunch of false indications that can occur sometimes depending on either the dog or the trainer. I think the person that we have in that role, being Deputy Jesse Cruz, is doing a great job with him. And also the networking pieces that are happening, he's working very closely with the drug task force, as well as the police department's canine division and also the other surrounding area canine places. So we've gone to Miles City, Glendive, um, Watford City as far as doing training. We're also working on being able to host some training here with those canine partners as well. So I think that has been very positive. Um, also, under the special operations division, we have our school resource deputies. We have two of those individuals. Um, we just hired a new person into that role because, uh, Mr. Eisenhower that joined us from the police department is moving to Wisconsin. So we have Deputy Sean Holm that's going into that role. This will be his first year. I also have Deputy Ashley Seeland who's been there with us a while, and she does an amazing job. She's doing, uh, she's going to be the one essentially training Sean for this position. I think that's been going well for the most part. I think the schools like having the people there, and it's also during the summer now, they help bolster the numbers on patrol when things can be busy with obviously summertime, warmer weather, camping, those types of things. So that division is our newest in that scope. It's going well. I think it's well-run. Uh, we're trying to be very cognizant of where we are in staffing numbers and trying to be responsible with what we're doing. That's why we haven't added a bunch to the generalized patrol side because we take those additional individuals, whether they're even investigators or whether in the special ops unit, and if we have the busy days, those people are going to help cover calls, uh, to include the patrol lieutenant, even chief deputy at times, depending on the circumstance and what's going on. So in our corrections division, we have Captain Mole, and he is the, what is referred to as the assistant jail administrator. I'm technically the jail administrator, but being honest, he's the daily operations guy that handles everything. And we also have Lieutenant Carr, who manages staff primarily within the corrections side with those two individuals in that role. Uh, they're great leaders, uh, great individuals, and I think we've really changed the culture within our corrections division. I think we get spoken of fairly highly within the state as far as what we have going on when the DOCR inspectors are in for how clean our facility is, how well things are run, the interactions with inmates are generally pretty positive. Obviously, that's not always the case because we're not going to make everyone there happy. But for the most part, I think the leadership we have in, in corrections, along with the sergeants we have in the right roles, is working very, very well. Now, we did create a new kind of team or division within corrections as well, referred to as the flex team. So corrections is very busy during the days, right? You have all of your appointment things that go on, whether they're doctor's appointments, dental appointments, whatever those may be, meetings with attorneys, uh, court. Obviously, these things don't happen on weekends and evenings, so flex team is made up of four individuals that handle almost all of those things as far as court and appointments and different, you know, scheduled things that have to go on during the workday. And then the other staff can maintain what is supposed to be happening down on the floor with corrections. So that is the biggest change that we've had. We've also added two positions in there in the last several years as far as, uh, support staff. Um, one of them came to us from California, previous corrections, Deputy Wile, she's taken over our inmate disciplinary stuff and our courtroom security. You're kind of from inmate security standpoint as far as classifying inmates and things, and she's doing an amazing job. She's actually now coordinating directly with the drug task force for information sharing and intelligence gathering. So that's been going very, very well. And then the other support staff is handling all of our, you know, medical billing and stuff uh, that comes in and pretty much all of the other day in, day out, paper needs that are, are there for us, and she does a great job of that. So those are the newest things within the sheriff's office. Um, one of the big projects we have going on right now within corrections is the infirmary project, which is going to add six beds into, uh, for individuals that maybe have communicable diseases or other medical needs, it's going to require us to kind of separate them from other individuals. We only have three of those bays right now, which can make it very challenging when we have to do sight-sound separation with male, female inmates and/or whatever communicable pieces they may dealing, be dealing with. So that's going to alleviate some of those challenges that we've seen in the past. Um, so I think that's a good project that should be getting started, I would think sometime late fall into the winter and then getting completed into twenty-six, which I think some of you are somewhat aware of, but that is moving forward and it's going fairly well. The general synopsis and overview of what we have going, so if you guys have questions, I'm usually much better at question and answer than I am just talking at you.
So back at the beginning, who's number two? I'm joking. Go ahead. Steve's got a question that makes sense.
Wait till you hear it. Uh, the school resource officers, what schools, uh, are they servicing?
So we have Tioga and Ray. Even though they have their own police departments, their manpower doesn't really allow for them to allocate much time there. So we do try to do that in conjunction with them. Uh, we also have Trenton, and then, um, any of our rural schools that are outside of the city jurisdiction we're a part of in some way. You know, with only two individuals, we do have to share time there as much as we can, so it is a little bit challenging. We don't have somebody at every school twenty-four, you know, every day.
Thank you.
Yeah.
So you do a little bit with District Seven with the school, uh, by the airport?
Yes.
Okay.
That's, Ashley is there. I think, uh, if we tried to move Ashley from there, they might revolt on us, so.
And I'll extend my gratitude to you and your team for addressing the safety needs of our county. Thank you so much, Sheriff.
Yeah, it's really them doing the work, so I'm, I'm just there.
Well, um, if no other questions, again, I, I agree there. I appreciate the work you guys do, and, um, I know a lot of the stuff that you do is a thankless job because they call me and then I call you and you explain it to me, and it makes perfect sense in my mind, but they're still mad at you, so.
Sometimes, and not always.
Well, they, they, they're usually mad at me too, so at least we're in the same boat there. But yes, thank you very much for everything you and your team does.
Yeah, and I think all of you have my number if you need me. Um, for whatever reason, when Commissioner Anderson tries to reach out to me, it's usually when I've creatively located my phone. It takes me a little bit, but I'm usually pretty good at either having it with me or getting back to you quickly if you have anything that comes up. All right, thank you.
Thank you. Is there any other department heads that we need to talk to today before we move on to Helen? No? Helen, come on down.
Good morning. All right, position report. Today, we are asking for permission to fill a couple of open positions. And that would be, uh, an assistant states attorney position. We'd recently hired someone and he's moved on to something else, and a patrol deputy position. Sheriff just mentioned somebody's moving to Wisconsin.
Okay, what are the wishes?
I would move to approve those two roles.
Is there a second?
Second.
Moving to second. Any discussion? Roll call, please.
Oh.
Yes.
Chris?
Yes.
Barry?
Yes.
Steve?
Yes.
Cory?
Yes, motion carried.
All right, and on the backside, we have, we have two open seats in the vector board. And when I created this list for you in the middle of last week, we had one application, and now we have two. And we've had, we had difficulty in the month of July. Uh, we, we could, actually couldn't have a vector meeting because we, we did not have a quorum. We have these two people who, who are, the people who are leaving their seats, thought they could hang on until we got it filled. Uh, both of them happened to be relocating out of the area, and that's just gone a little faster than they expected. And then there is somebody else serving on the vector board who has, uh, some medical stuff going on and, and hasn't been able to attend meetings. And so the chairman of the vector board and I had a conversation. I have had, uh, separate then conversations with each of these people on behalf, in essence, of the chairman and the vector board just to make sure before we appointed them, they understood the obligation, the meeting times that they were, they were able to serve. I, I explained this because often we, we convey these, uh, names, these applications to the board. They review them as, as a board and send forward their recommendation to you. We're not sure we're going to be able to get a quorum together until we get them appointed. And so you see, we've, the, the chairman and I have improvised the system a little bit to try and keep us moving forward. So I would recommend that, uh, Jim Schiffler and Lee Lush be appointed to the vector board into these two open seats. I can give you the name.
Okay, is there any questions or does anybody have a, a motion they want to make?
I'll move to, uh, point these two people to the, uh, seat two and seat four. Terms of five, five, twenty-five through five, four, twenty-seven, and five, five, twenty-five and five, four, twenty-thirty for Lee Lush and, and, uh, Jim Schiffler.
Is there a second?
All second.
Moved in second. Any discussion? Discussion. Roll call, please.
Chris?
Yes.
Barry?
Yes.
Steve?
Yes.
Cory?
Yes.
Bo?
Yes.
Motion carried.
All right, so at some past meeting, I updated the board that we, Commissioner Hanson and I had gone to an Upper Missouri Valley Fair Association meeting to talk to them about the offer that we had made to purchase the Upper Missouri Valley Fair grounds. At we, last fall, but for sure in the early part of this year, I was given formal direction from this board on what that offer would be and some of the details that potentially I, a staff member could work through with the board. It occurred to me that we have their counter offer today on the agenda, and I, I, you all got that as part of the agenda. But I had previously forwarded to you our, our original offer, which I will give to Beth, or I did actually this morning, email to all of you and her so that that can be part of the public record. This counter offer doesn't make a lot of sense potentially to someone in the future looking back if they don't have the original offer with them as well. So if you wanted to look at that, it should be in your inbox now. Uh, what, what we offered was three hundred thousand dollars to purchase the property to pay off the debt, uh, they have a loan, to pay off that debt for them. And then the, the document that we give them said that we would be willing to discuss an additional allocation of money that we would hold for future grants, and it was the intention of this board that if the fair association could bring forward a, an event, a need, a activity, a concert that required funding outside of their typical budget or outside of what they could typically afford, that we, uh, through an approval process, would, would potentially grant them those funds. And I, 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 I think that I took our intention was that that would fall under that quality of life umbrella, and we have ten years of a sales tax in which we could potentially provide that kind of support in some kind of a structure that was to be discussed. And then we, we have a list of other things, which includes that we would, uh, when we purchased the property, we would purchase the accessories that go along with it. Typically, a property purchase includes things attached to the building, but not necessarily the things that support the operation of this kind of a site. And then we talked about in our original offer, the investment that we intended to make at the site. As Commissioner Hanson has said more than once, our intention was to be a help, recognizing that the five oh one C three, the Upper Missouri Valley Fair Association, is struggling to have the cash that it would take to operate and maintain this site long-term. And we, uh, this, let me go back and say this all started because we have three targeted projects that we are constructing using one percent sales tax money. It's what we promised the public we would do when we asked them to consider the vote, the, the tax extension. And we anticipate that one of those facilities would be a good fit to be built out at the fairgrounds. And so our original conversation about this was certainly we can help to maintain a site that right now is difficult for the five oh one C three to maintain, but also because we can't spend the kind of money that we would be building on a facility on property that we don't own. So I won't go through the whole original offer, other than to say there are details about how we and they would interact because they would continue to operate the fair, which would be a, a, a three-week or so window in the month of June every year in which they would operate the fair. We would maintain and do other things out at the site, and we would all work together. There is a liquor license that the fair association holds. Williams County is not interested in holding a liquor license. And so they would continue to hold that license and do the beer and liquor service out at the site. That is a part of how they raise money throughout the year to be able to operate the fair, and so it makes sense. It continues to bring, allow them that, that revenue source. So you can see in front of you then that they provided us, uh, last week, and the president of the Upper Missouri Valley Fair Association, Shane Simblek, is here. But they provided us what I have called a counter offer. And I'll just note a couple of those items, and I have a, a sort of my staff comments about those and then let you all talk. So their counter offer is that the county would provide two hundred thousand dollars annually for a period of fifteen years, and in essence, that the, the fair association would have full discretion, um, for how to use that money. And, and, uh, as I told Shane when I talked to him last week, uh, they have, they have money in savings and will have some more if they sell us the property. And if all things go well, the fair breaks even every year. They're not, they're not making a lot of money, but they're breaking even. And so I, what I heard and, and I think what I believe to be true is that it wouldn't be a responsible use of taxpayer dollars for us to hand them a, a sum of cash every year and, and for some unknown future purpose. It was our intention to have a fund, money in which we held, and a, a grant program that would allow them to do something more bigger, different. But, um, because they are taxpayer dollars, I, I think it was our intention that the commission needed to have approval of that on an annual basis and that it wouldn't extend beyond the ten years of the one percent sales tax extension. Um, I, I think it would be complicated for us to do this long-term outside of the tax. Uh, they would like, they would like to have first rate of refusal to purchase the, repurchase the property at the original price. I, I think that's, uh, uh, something we cannot agree to. If, first of all, once something is a government asset, we have to get a, a fair and reasonable price. There's a, a, a bid or an auction sale requirement for us, but also if we build a structure out there, whatever structure it might be, I think it's millions of dollars worth of construction, and it creates an asset that we can't sell back to them at, for the same price that we're buying the property for. Uh, they would like to continue to operate the liquor license. We agree, of course, so long as they're in good standing with the city of Williston's liquor license regulations. They would like to retain the oil rights. I don't know that we have any concern about that. Uh, they would like to maintain, we would again, purchase all of the accessories that go along with the buildings, but they would like to maintain ownership of two side-by-side vehicles, and, and we're fine with that. But of course, once it's county property, there'll be some liability waivers and those kinds of things to, to sign when folks are operating equipment out there. Uh, they had some concern about the equipment and materials owned by the clubs or associations, so there's some tenants out on the site. For example, the Curling Club uses the multipurpose building for the, during the curling season. So I note here that, of course, we're going to have to work with those tenants and any other stakeholders to work through the shared use agreements or the tenancy agreements, and then, um, that we would complete an inventory at, because we know that those groups own some things, and we could, to start things out, make sure everybody knew what, what everyone owned. And we could to start things out, make sure everybody knew what what everyone owned. Uh they make a request that we maintain open and transparent communication regarding planned or proposed events. I took this to be uh because they'll be doing the liquor service at the site. That we need to have a good system in order to keep them up to date and informed because they will be operating the bar lining up folks to do that. So we will have a point of contact at the county who would be setting up any kind of events, coordinating scheduling. And certainly as soon as that event is scheduled within, you know, that day. Our staff, whoever it is, would be able to email out to their contact, the schedule, the plan, all those kinds of things. I have no concern about that. And then we would certainly, as we intend to develop that property to be used for more than it is today. We'd stay in touch with them so that they knew how those changes might impact their fair operation each year. And of course, what what we have said, what I've said to anyone who asks about this. Is that it's it's our intention to improve upon the quality of life throughout Williams County, not to take things away. And so it wouldn't be our intention to make a change to the site and then it somehow eliminates their ability to host a fair. It is to make it uh better and easier, hopefully, all the way around. And then uh finally, their last item was that all currently scheduled or planned events are honored under the existing agreements. And uh we 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 would ask that they give us a written list of scheduled events on the purchase date, so on the closing date. And and I think we could commit to everything scheduled in twenty-six. But but as we begin to change the use of the site, we would not be able to commit to everything. Being exactly where it is in twenty-seven and forward. If the i- if the Agra building is to be used for some other purpose long term. People wouldn't be able to host a wedding reception there if if they've already scheduled that. We would have to make other arrangements at the point at which we began changing the use of the site. So uh you know, we can we can try and certainly we'll accommodate people as best we can. We intend to continue to allow folks to use the site for the kind of events that are used there today. But um time will march forward and so we can't indefinitely make those kinds of commitments. I can step aside then to let you all speak or I don't know that Shane really wants to come to the microphone. Okay.
Okay, sounds good. I well, first of all, thanks for putting all this together, Helen. Just having it down on paper makes it a lot uh a lot easier to go through. I guess from my standpoint, I would like us to just go through these line by line. Um and talk about each one of them and and I'll I'll go ahead and start the the two hundred thousand annually. I I guess I have the same concern of us uh committing that and then letting somebody else have control of county money, basically. I don't think that's an option. The only other thing that I've thought about, I I read this yesterday and and Helen and I talked about it a little bit. I think it would probably be better because this is going to be future boards that are going to be deciding this and and not the five of us. Maybe we say up to two hundred thousand because. I don't know. I mean, I I feel like that's a lot of money that we're going to have committed that's going to be locked up there that may or may not get used. And and I and that's that's not a shot at the fair or anything. You, you know, you have an operating budget already uh from money that you've got for the fair and now we want another two hundred thousand. Are we going to have that big of an event every year? If we do, I'm great with it. That's a great way to to spend this this one percent money. But until we get there, it could just have money locked up sitting there for no reason that we could maybe use for something else. So I'll shut. Let's let's finish that one first.
With that two hundred thousand, the idea would be they would apply just like everybody else would. I mean, that's how that money is dispersed.
They'd have to bring a plan.
Yeah.
Say, here's what it is. That's not the way they requested it. They wanted to have a but but.
Committed.
What Helen wrote in here and which I agree with wholeheartedly is it would have to be, here's the plan, here's how we're going to spend the money.
Yeah, we can certainly be flexible. What that timeline is, I think we'd have to understand from them. When do they need to start? If if it's going to be a concert and a different kind of midway entertainment, when do they put down the money on that? We could work backwards, make sure that our grant program is timed and then our funding is set up correctly so that they can use it for the purposes they need. But yes, I I mean, I I think we've set a. A baseline for how we distribute money. And that involves an application and a review and an and approval by this board.
And the existing annual budgeted general fund contribution, what do we do with that? That stays the same or?
You know, they have been using that primarily to support the four H functions and to support site improvements. And so I I don't know that that would need to continue. Because we, I think, as the as the operators of the site would be taking care of being be doing what they have been and more likely at the site. And I think we could directly handle some of the expenses related to four H instead of funneling money to somebody else. And then their volunteer treasurer having to write checks. We can just run them through the finance department.
And Steve, that that was one that I thought I agree a hundred percent that that's going to stop. The other the other thing that with with the the grant, we're more likely going to have someone involved. Because if we're we're do if we're running the site, we're going to want, I mean, we want it to improve and we want it to get bigger and better and 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 all these things. So I think we would probably have a person, I don't know exactly who it would be, but there's going to be somebody that might be involved with it. He's smiling now, so.
Helen or Mr. Chairman, do we, I mean, we would want to see an accounting for how that money would be used. I mean, we would need to see receipts. Have either you or Mr. Hanson, have you guys gone through their financials and looked through things and and just kind of carries on the accountability side of all this?
Yeah, as a stipulation to the to the funding that they get from us annually now. They do provide us a a financial statement, so we get a a profit and loss statement and a um. The word is escaping me, but yes, we we get their final audit report every year. And so that's how we've, I I did do, I went, I took a deep dive through the last three years of those. And was able to also flush out a little bit that they will be able to uh remain. They're they're not getting so much rent from this site that they won't be able to operate as they are today. Uh likely they come out ahead when they don't own the site and don't have the expenses of maintaining it. But yeah, and so I that really that's a requirement of all of our grant applications is that we understand. To maybe the depth varies depending on the grant, but we understand the financial situation of the organization that we're funding.
In this, like a two hundred thousand dollar per year grant, it's not cumulative, it's just up to two hundred thousand would be available.
That would be my thought as well, that it's like so many other budgets that we have, if it's not spent in a year. Flushes back into the pool of cash and we budget two hundred thousand the next year.
And I guess that's that's probably where you missed what I was saying. I'm saying we we say we will budget up to two hundred thousand because future boards could decide, well, it hasn't been used, it's a hundred thousand. Or that was the only thing I was saying, just so we didn't tie it up. If it's, I mean, it's quality of life money and.
We could maybe in down the road, it'd be two fifty or you know, it right, but we don't want to really. Lock it in to where you can't improve on it in the future. And I I agree, I think uh running it through the one percent and it would be just like everybody else that's been through the one percent already. Just bring in an application and it's it it that that I don't see how it could be, I think it would have to be run that way.
Yeah, and the the only difference, so it's going to be the other side of the one percent, it won't be the ones, it won't be the committee that that you and I.
But I mean, but right, but it 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 there's no reason that this side of that couldn't run.
Absolutely.
Cause that that is ran. Fantastic. I mean, it just it it's, yeah.
My concern would be that if we would allocate some funds towards this, you know, we're using taxpayer dollars. Our taxpayers are going to see that they're getting some bang for their buck and if there's, if they see no progress, but we've spent a hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars. You know, we're, do we have to have some sort of a benchmark, some measuring tool that we can say this is worth pursuing?
And I agree, I think that's that's where Helen came up with a it's it's more of the grant program. You got to bring it in, it's going to get vetted. Um I would assume it'll be like every other grant committee will have a committee. It'll be discussed and they'll make the decision if if that's a, and I won't say worth, if that's worth the county's money. Or the one percent money to support.
Yeah, the discussion I heard of this board in the past was. Uh I suppose if something catastrophic happened, terrible weather uh and and just to up and they. Their reserves were so low that just to operate the fair, they needed an infusion of money. I suppose that could be the grant request, but outside of that, the hope was that it would be an addition to what has normally happened at the fair. New and different things, enhancements. And that's why that grant application would allow us to see that, make the decision. And then the next year, when the grant request comes, we get to say, tell us about how that went. Oh, it went great. We're doing it again, you know, whatever the case might be.
And the idea is to relieve the uh Upper Missouri Valley Fair Board from having to maintain all this property and let them focus on. What they do and uh I think that's that's fantastic. Now, the uh can you describe the mechanism? I mean, how this all started and why that we cannot operate a fair?
Yes, it is, it has been my understanding that the North Dakota Century Code says a, they call it a. There's some funny term for what a fair board is, but they must be organized under the nonprofit statutes of the city. And then it lays out some details for how a five oh one C three then is by the board. Assigned to be the the county fair operator. You can only have one county fair. Uh I have a in uh some detailed opinion from our legal staff. That describes how it is that we got to have the Upper Missouri Valley Fair Association way back into the fifties or sixties. Because apparently there was some question somewhere along the way about the Tioga. There was a, there was a festival in Tioga that um there was some conversation about could they both be the fair? Could they go both get some money and so that was clarified. Now, I had a conversation with Karen yesterday in which she said there is one attorney generals or or um one opinion out there of some sort. That that maybe provides some alternative to having a five oh one C three. But I it it just came up yesterday, so I don't know more. Um but yes.
I think the one thing that we we do want to remember though, I mean, uh it it wasn't our intention to get rid of the fair board. That and and I don't want that con- this conversation to be misconstrued because that's not, these folks are hardworking. I mean, they're they're doing a great job on a shoestring and we're just trying to help. And if we can improve the facilities and make things better without them having to take out a loan as a fair board and then pay it back every year. I mean, that that was my goal from the start of this whole thing, so.
Yeah, I don't I don't, there is that I know no count, no government agency in North Dakota that runs a county fair. I think there are stipulations for how the money, I think it would get sticky. I right over the border in Montana, their laws are different and their county fair is, I believe, run Richland County's fair is run by the county. I believe that means though that taxpayer money is used to to run and operate that fair. It's not how things are set up here as I understand it.
So the other thing that in my mind, there's an opportunity here. I mean, with the folks from the Upper Missouri Valley Fair, the association and the work that they've already done. But in moving forward, there's an opportunity for the county to place. Uh emphasis on that area for the new egg facilities for this one percent. But there's opportunity for a little extra land, possibly if we can work something out to make that site bigger. And then to make all those improvements fit. But in my mind, it's a good fit and it's a good spot to help the economic development of the community. By placing those activities in in a spot that makes sense. So in the future, hopefully that uh these facilities that get built, I mean, they're going to bring people in. And lots of it and they're going to be spending money and they're going to be doing it right smack in the middle of Williston. So I think it makes sense. I'm glad that uh the association is willing to come to the table and work with us and see what we can do to make it all better. But um our counter offer to them, I mean, they have they discussed those terms or there's still more discussion to be done on. What we're basically saying, this is what we can do.
I'll I'll look to Shane in a second, but I had a conversation with him last week in which I, in essence, said. I gave him my staff report, which I wrote up for you all and and sent out yesterday. So he knew coming into this meeting that we were not going to be able to for fifteen years just remit two hundred thousand dollars. But I think he may have been waiting to hear that officially from you before he went back to his board. I'm just staff, you know.
Yeah, because we're using quality of life money that the the that sun sets in ten years, so we. Cannot commit to anything beyond that.
Right, well, and their request was they get two hundred thousand a year that they decide and that, I mean, we can't, we can't say yes to that with taxpayer money.
Right.
In my opinion, anyway. So I how do you, how do we want to go about this then? I mean, we can, I guess we can go through these over and over again, but how do we want to do it? What do we want to? Somebody have an idea of what we want to change on this? Or do we want to ask Helen to go back and kind of put together what we just talked about? Or how how do we want to, talk to me, what do you want?
Yeah, I I think what I heard from Shane last week is that the whole board, you know, he he has to have the whole board here. Hear your response and so I committed to recapping in essence what you all will say here today. Of course, his board members could go watch the recording if they wanted to hear your comments. And uh meaning, we can't wait for the minutes to come out because we want to move more quickly than that. But I could recap what we talk about here, get from Beth a language of emotion if that's where we end up. And I would email that out to his full board so that they all hear the same thing at the same time. And then uh I guess they would need to meet. And and whether I and a commissioner are there or they meet without us and they come back one last time. With a yes or a no, uh I did convey to Shane that we were hoping to get moving. Uh if we're going to get closed and then be prepared to manage the site through the winter. We you you know, we need to keep rolling here.
Okay, so it sounds to me like we need to uh it's it's not going to be easy because we're going to need to come up with a motion. And it's not, right?
Yes, I I think item number two also warrants your like active discussion from the board. The other items, so long as you agree with my staff comments, I think, you know, you could roll that into the. Um motion and I can give Beth these staff comments to include, but item number two.
Well, it really, really doesn't. It's not legal. We we can't say yes to that. Right?
Yeah, I mean.
I mean, it's not legal to say yes to that. We can't give them an option to buy, so I guess that's why I didn't bring it up. It's, I'm sorry, I, you wrote it very, very eloquently and it made sense to me, so but if you guys want to jump in, go ahead.
I I would say we would have to strike number two. I mean, it it we we cannot buy something and then put. Hundreds or millions of dollars worth of improvements on it and then sell it back to. I mean, that that's that, I mean, I'm pretty sure we'd probably get hung.
Well, and I I guess from my chair, why would, why would we sell it? I mean, it we're we're purchasing the county, the fairgrounds for purpose of public use. And better improvement and making what your is going to be millions of dollars worth of improvements for quality of life. So I get why they put it in there, I understand. However, it's like uh from my chair, as long as I sit here, I have zero understanding why we would sell it, so. Yeah. But. But we can't, we still can't say that. Understand. Cause we, these aren't ours permanently, we gotta. Yeah, no, I know, but we we strike it because I don't see why we'd endeavor sell it. The county is buying it for the purpose of public use. Okay, and how do how does, if somebody wants to take a shot at a a motion. As far as the the two hundred thousand and striking number two.
Can we just get, if if we were to do that, can, because I I've I've read through this and I and I'm. I am comfortable with the um comments or the. You know, the resolutions that Helen has worked up on these. Um can we just roll it all into one or do we gotta?
Yeah, I think we can. I think we can roll it all into one.
Oh, okay, but I mean, I is everybody else oh oh comfortable with the the way this is all laid out?
I guess my only thing is I'd like to see it up to. I guess my only thing is I'd like to see it up to, I mean, not to lock us in at two hundred thousand annually. I would like to see it more so, so if future boards could and I don't know exactly how to say that, but they could decide to do more or less. Or I mean, if they come in one year with a great project that's three hundred thousand dollars, I wouldn't be opposed to that if it's great for the community.
Well, but I I think they, you know, if say if the motion was to up to two hundred thousand for the one percent applications. But then if if they needed another fifty or six or whatever, that that could just be a separate application, could it not?
Yeah, I I think if you all can agree, because there will be a written agreement that can sort through those details. I, I think what Shane and I need from you all is a baseline of what you agree to. So if I hear you saying you do want a grant program in place, you don't object to two hundred thousand. You're acknowledging that it, in the future, a board might make a decision to make it higher or lower based on use and need.
I, I, my, my concern with with that, whether it says two hundred thousand or up to two hundred thousand dollars. If I'm on the fair board, my assumption is gonna be in the back of my mind, I always have two hundred thousand dollars to work with.
But they, it's a grant process, so they have to request it with a plan behind it and
But they're still gonna always assume we've got two hundred thousand dollars to work with. So I don't know if that verbiage would matter at all.
My thought here is the board, the board is in agreement to move forward. So can the motion say that we are, we're in agreement with the process to move forward? You guys hammer out the, the final details to bring to us for approval motion at our next meeting. Does that sound fair?
In two weeks, can you be back? Oh, oh, it's three. Beth says we're on, we're on a long cycle here, so. Okay, okay.
So you, are you good with that, Helen? I mean, I don't wanna just hang you out to dry on it.
Yep, yep.
So could we make a motion today that supports this staff report in general for terms to be worked out in the future?
Is there a second to that motion? Yeah, I'll second that. Okay, uh moved and seconded, any discussion? I, I just think that this is a work in progress. We're moving forward. I mean, thanks Shane for your work with your board. But discussion continues, but you, you know what our intention is, right? So you guys can hammer out the details and then get us a motion that we can approve. And then it should be just signatures and cutting checks after that, next meeting. Bo's got a lot of confidence in how easy this is, Shane. He hasn't been where we, you and I've been sitting, so maybe we got the guy that needs to be sitting there, cuz uh it's not quite that easy. Okay, we got a motion in a second. Any other discussion? Roll call.
Barry?
Yes.
Steve?
Yes.
Cory?
Yes.
Bo?
Yes.
Chris?
Yes.
Motion carried.
Hey, Cameron just reminded me, while I was off on Friday, we got a resignation. Can I add one more position?
Please do.
For the position report, that would be an administrative assistant position in the Development Services Department.
Okay, what are the wishes?
Move to approve.
There's a, moved and seconded, any discussion? Bo? Any discussion? Roll call.
Steve?
Yes.
Cory?
Yes.
Bo?
Yes.
Chris?
Yes.
Barry?
Yes.
Motion carried. Is that all you got, Helen?
That's it.
All right.
Thank you.
Well, seeing no further items on the agenda, we are adjourned. Nine fifty-four, eight fifty-four.